All right. Good evening. The time being 7:02 on May 4th, 2020. All members of the Planning Board being present. I call this meeting to order. First off, again, we'll remind those at home who are watching. You can watch on Comcast Channel 99 and Verizon Channel 33. And the call-in number to participate from public hearing, If you're unable to get through, the queue's only three people. So if you're not able to get through, we could just keep trying. As we drop calls, you'll be able to come into the queue. We do have a slight delay to the TV. So we'll stretch when we're talking. Give people an opportunity to call in. But just remember that we're a little bit ahead of what you're seeing on TV. And with that, first item on our agenda tonight. We have no minutes to prove this evening. So we'll move to Agenda Item B, which is Committee Reports Administrative Actions. Do any of the members have any committee reports they'd like to make at this time?
No, not at this time.
So all seven, Mr. Chairman?
All right. Sounds like none to hear this evening. So we'll move on to Agenda Item B2, which is 1574 Main Street, Nonsubstantial Change Request. Do we have anyone here for law, 1574 Main Street?
Hi, this is Joel Kahn with Equity Alliance. I represent both 1574 Main Street LLC as well as Lowell General Hospital. The request in front of you tonight, when this site plan was originally approved, as you might know from passing by, there is a one-way entrance heading northbound on Main Street and an exit only onto Main Street, also just heading northbound only, that were signified by both signage as well as a raised triangular island at that entry that was a granite curb along with filled with concrete. We have been notified by the fire department that while they originally approved this design and everybody was out after the project was complete, was satisfied that we did everything per the plan, have told us that they are concerned about the curb cutting their tires if they have to make an emergency turn into the site heading northbound. They've asked us to eliminate the raised portion of the island to put a flush-mounted concrete in its place, maintaining still all the signage. But that would give them a wider turning radius should they need to gain access to the site in the event of emergency. Currently, their alternative is to turn down Victor Lane and come in from that direction as well. And so the application today in front of you is to approve that change.
All right. We'll start with Mr. Fowler.
I don't know if Mr. Fowler's here.
He was earlier.
All right, you know what? Jay, why don't we start with you and then I'll come back to Bob.
Okay. I don't have a problem with it. You know, it's just a concrete divider. The only thing is, is that going to change? That was usually, that thing was put in for a direction thing, for people to go left and right coming out of that, coming out of that parking lot or that facility. Are they going to put up like a sign or something that's going to let people know? In other words, it's not going to be just one single, it's going to be like a single driveway now. I remember us discussing that for the in and out coming onto Main Street.
There is currently a sign that indicates a right-hand turn only on exit in that. And we have no plans to remove it. And the, what will be replaced in this triangular will be a concrete poured with sort of a, I'm trying to look at the word, sort of, well, it'd be flush mounted with grooves. For trying to dissuade people from making that turn in. Will it stop people? I guess there's always people who break the rules. But we're trying to be responsive to the fire department request.
Well, I'm going to go along with the fire department's request. I don't have a problem with it. So I would think we're okay. I'm okay with it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Delaney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ryder.
Thank you. I do not have a problem with this. However, in my, my experience with these, they do not last. On New England, with the snowplows and the concrete salt and ultimately vehicles driving over them, they will not last. You may get one or two seasons out of it. I'd just like something that makes sure it's maintained. If it does start to deteriorate, it will be replaced.
I guess the answer would be yes. Our intention is obviously, you're absolutely right. Concrete does not do well on that. So there is some risk to it, but I'm not sure what the alternative is. I mean, we're happy the way it is, but we're, again, being responsive to the fire department.
No, absolutely. I understand, I understand their concern. I just, you know, it will become a maintenance problem that will be, need to be addressed as part of, you know, regular maintenance on the property. But other than that, I'm all set.
All right, Mr. Fataia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had a couple of questions. So it's got to be an actual rumble strip. Is that what it's going to be like?
Correct.
Okay. So I know in the past, like Mr. Delaney said, we approved that to not encourage clients to enter on Main Street. This way, they'll be able to enter on Main Street, right? Coming, coming south?
If they want to go over the rubble concrete, the answer would be there's nothing to stop them, which is the way it is today. Correct.
How is that going to be coming in and coming out of the driveway? It's usually one way, isn't it, coming in? Coming out?
One way coming in and it still will be one way coming out. The only difference is rather than there to be a granite curve sticking out of the ground, we would put, like you say, a rubble strip concrete structure close to the flush in the ground, trying to lower the profile. We could, you know, that, so that's what the proposal is. We don't have any other alternative to address their concerns.
Yeah, I just see it as a problem with someone's coming into that driveway from Main Street, not knowing it's a one-way and obviously you have a dual enter sign in there. You're going to go in there from coming, if they see the building and they miss make the drive, they're going to take that left so they don't have to go down and turn around, right?
There's always that risk.
So what I'm worried about is somebody entering the driveway when it's a one-way coming out, really. Except coming, coming north.
Understood. I mean, one could argue on the other side, but again, I'm not here to argue with the fire department. At the time differential between making the right-hand turn Victor into the property is also, you know, minor in nature. But I understand in the event of emergency, they want to feel they have access, so.
Okay. Can I have a minute? Many?
Mr. Fowler?
Mr. Fataia, could I cut in here for you to help you?
Go ahead, yeah.
Obviously, we know why we're doing this because of the fire trucks hitting the granite curb, the granite, you know, curb that's horizontal. Why can't we put a granite slope curb there? Because this is what I'm thinking is going to happen. Someone's going to come out of there and go left onto Main Street, over the rumble strip, and that's what we don't want them to do.
Exactly.
So that's why I'm asking, why can't we put a granite slope curb there? That way, the fire department, if they go up on it, it's not going to hurt their tires. But the person in the car is going to say, I'm ugly over here.
I see Mr. Hanley's on this call. He was our engineer of record at the time. Jim, do you want to comment? Is that any reason from your standpoint why that couldn't be done?
Yeah. So Jimmy Hanley with Civil Design. I don't think there's any reason that couldn't be done. I would just be careful to, to propose something that the fire department isn't aware of. I think we'd want to make sure that whatever, if, if we had an understanding with them about a certain solution, I think that before we finalize this maybe, that there's a phone call with the fire department to make sure that they're okay with it.
That would be fine.
But practically speaking, the sloped curb in that application should work on.
I have no problem with the conditional approval being granted that tasks me or making sure that we have that conversation and work with planning staff to implement the solution that's acceptable. I certainly have no issue with that solution either, so.
Let me take it back to Mr. Fataia first.
All right. So I mean, that was one of my concerns as well. I mean, so my question is, if they're coming north on 38, are they hitting it that way? Or if they're coming down south from 38 from the center, are they taking a left on Victor or are they going straight to the driveway?
No, they're making a right-hand turn north only where they're telling us they're hitting the curb.
Okay. All right. So it's the northbound access into the site that they're hitting?
Correct.
So maybe that slope curb will work if that's the case. Maybe keep it as is. Guessing, I'm just trying to not make people go in there. I think they can go in there and then have an accident waiting to happen because we decided to hang it right away.
And again, we're good residents, you know, property owners. We're happy to work out the best solution for all. Absolutely.
Okay. All right. With that, I'm all seven, Jim. Some input, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Fataia. Mr. Fowler?
I just, I just gave my two cents.
All right. So I'm, I'm fine either way. I mean, I want to make it as simple as possible for, I just assume since, since we do meet next week, that we give them an opportunity to comment on the alternative suggestion to see if that will meet their needs. And if it does, this is administrative action, so we can deal with this at the beginning of next meeting and just approve one thing. Rather than trying to approve two things and then, you know, see what happens. If we get an answer back that the slope curbing works, then go that route. If it doesn't, then, you know, we're kind of back to what was presented tonight. And if we, I suspect that if it comes down to that being the real preferred solution for the fire department, we'll most likely end up going with it. You know, the business is already open. This isn't preventing them from operating. So I think taking the week just to see if we get an answer isn't going to, isn't going to cause too much of a problem.
And I will even ask my good friend, Mr. Hanley there, if he would make such a call and see if he could work it out and report that to planning staff since I know he's in more readily, often in contact with the staff.
All right, Mr. Hanley, you've been nominated, so are you okay?
Yeah, that's all right. So I'll take care of it.
All right. So then we'll put this off until next meeting then to make a decision on, so you can see what works best.
Okay, do you all need me based on the response to attend next meeting? Or is this, as you say, going to be an administrative?
Well, this is administrative this evening. So I would suggest, I would think it would be best, it's the first thing we do at the beginning of the meetings. So if you just jump on at the beginning, just in case anything else comes up, it's better to have you on and then we can settle everything up rather than realize we wish we could talk to you and now we can't.
Okay, fair enough.
All right.
Thank you all very much. Wishing you and your families good health.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
You as well, sir.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item B3, 138 Astle Street, Nonsubstantial Change Request. Do we have anyone here for 138 Astle Street?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Jim Hanley, Civil Design Consultants.
Christian Murray with 88 Astle Street.
Okay, so, so I'm here with Christian tonight. We've got a nonsubstantial change in front of you for 138 Astle. So in its entirety tonight, we have a slight adjustment to the right-of-way to allow the existing deck and front porch of the remaining house to, to remain as a port to be raised.
Mr. Hanley, I don't mean to interrupt you. I'm sorry, just give me one second. Can I just remind everyone, anyone who's not speaking at this, at that time or, you know, the member who's asking the questions, if we could just mute just to make sure we don't catch a lot of background noise? Makes it real hard for everyone to hear as well as the folks at home on the TV. Thank you.
So I'd like to share my screen, if possible, here, which I think I'm doing right now. So I just kind of want to flip through this thing a little bit here. So just to remind you of the history, I think everybody was on the board here when we went through our six or eight months of permitting for this thing. But we originally had six lots and went back and forth with DPW on layout and configuration of the roadway. We also went back and forth with you over two about the affordable component. So at the end of the day, we, we got the four lots. In, in one of the conditions here was we're keeping the existing residence. And you can see a note here, and I kind of highlighted it in blue, but the existing porch is to be raised, right? And so that was because we originally had a private, a public roadway coming through here. And you can see this black dash line. It kind of cuts the, the deck off here and the porch in the front off of, off of that location there. So we, where we stand right now is that what we're looking to do is to just basically modify the right-of-way. So you can see, this is, this is a picture of the front of the house. So it certainly is more substantial than a typical farmer's porch, a timber-framed farmer's porch. It's actually a block wall. It's the foundation. And the, the deck is, and porch is actually fairly integral to the structure of the house. Not to say it can't be removed because it can. But we think that the character of the house and the area has some meaning here. And really would like the, just consideration for an adjustment to the, to the subdivision plan because that's all it would be. So we submitted a plan to you that essentially shows this. I added a little color just so that it would pop out at you a little bit. But the red lines in essence are the, the minor modification. So plus or minus five feet along both sides of the right-of-way, we'd make these minor adjustments. That would allow us to keep the porch and the existing deck. We'd also be willing to provide an easement in between the location of where the, the new right-of-way is versus the approved right-of-way line. That would just give you an added sense of security that nothing else is going to happen there. And I just want to reiterate, no change to the edge of pavement, vertically, horizontally, angles, adjustments, curves, nothing like that. So the edge of pavement actually stays the same. I'm sure you remember, but all we have beyond this is, is three lots out by the end of the cul-de-sac. So that's really the, the proposal in a nutshell. And, you know, just wanted to run by you and get your comments.
All right, we'll start with Mr. Fataia. All right, why don't we start with you, Mr. Fowler?
There I am, Mr. Josh. Can you hear me now?
I can. Mr. Fowler, are you there?
Yes, I'm saying hello.
All right, we'll start with you.
Can you hear me all right?
Yep.
Okay. Hello, Mr. Delaney?
Hello.
Yeah, okay, good. You know what? The way Jim, if you can hear me, I was, I was here at quarter of seven and I went off.
Can't hear you now.
I think we lost you, Mr. Fowler.
It's on mute.
Mr. Fowler?
You're on mute.
He's muted.
There you go.
There we go.
All right. Now you're back.
I'm back, all set?
You're back, yes.
Okay, thank you. The explanation that Jim gave us was fine with me. With the easement and whatnot, if we started messing with that curb and bringing it up further, we'd have the same problem we had three months ago. Because the fire truck or whatever wouldn't be able to make the radius. And I wouldn't want to get in that battle again. We have a double curve as it is and I wouldn't want to make the curve deeper. Is that all right with you, Jim?
Yes, yeah, yep.
Okay, so your explanation to me, to us, was fine with me.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Mr. Delaney?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I really don't have a problem with it either because if they had to start dealing with the house, the porch or the decks or whatever, I think it would change the outlook. I think the house looks good with the decks and so forth the way they are. So I kind of agree with, with Jim and what he wants to do there. I, I really don't have a problem with it. I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney. Mr. Ryder?
Thank you. Yes, I agree with Mr. Hanley as well as putting that, the easement in there. And then obviously with one of the pictures that you're showing, Mr. Hanley, you're going to, obviously, is that the old septic tank? Is that being removed as part of the project?
Um, let's see.
Christian, is that the old septic tank?
Yeah, that's being crushed. We tied into town sewer and put the pipe in and that's being crushed once we get over to grade in that area.
Okay, okay. Other than that, I don't have anything I think that will work out well. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Fataia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I as well agree with Mr. Hanley's description of the plan and I love the porch. I'd hate to see that porch go away. So with that, I'd love you to keep the porch and go on as you, as discussed. So I'm all set, Chairman. Thank you.
All right, I'm all set as well. I think that would be a shame to get rid of that porch. You know, it's not a material change to anything to tweak that a little bit just to keep that around. So I have no issue with it. Great, that. What is the pleasure of the board on this nonsubstantial change request?
Make a motion to withdraw the plan as proposed.
All right, so we have a motion made to accept the nonsubstantial change as submitted. We have a second. We'll just roll, we'll roll call the whole thing. So we'll start with Mr. Fowler.
I'm a bump. Yep. Yes.
Aye from Mr. Fowler. Mr. Delaney?
Yes, aye. I'm all set with it.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Mr. Fataia?
Yes.
And chair votes aye as well, so unanimous. All right, we're all set. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item C, 325 Marshall Street. The applicant has requested that this be continued to our 5/11 meeting. Let's see if I've got a time. So do we have a motion to continue this matter to 7:15 on May 11?
So move it.
All right, so I have a motion and a second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to Agenda Item D, 600 Uwein Street. I believe after that, the late letter that we received, that I think all the members got today, the applicant has requested to continue this to our next meeting as well, so they have some time to address the comments in the letter. So we have a motion to continue 600 Uwein Street to 7:20 on 5/11.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to Agenda Item E, 135 Pleasant Street, Elementary School. Site plan special permit continued for our 4/27 meeting. Do we have anyone here for 135 Pleasant Street?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
All right, if you guys would just state your names from the record, the floor will be yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, board members. For the record, my name is Peter Collins from CBRE. As the owner's project manager on behalf of the town manager and the elementary school building committee and there are other representatives from the design team on this call as well. I'll let them introduce themselves.
That's Bill Beatrice from Plansburg Architects.
Sam Basta from Crosby, Schlesinger, Small Ridge Landscape Architects.
Mr. Chairman, board members, again, Peter Collins. Just since we last met a week ago, the design team has submitted a complete set of revised documents summarizing the changes that have taken place or the minor revisions here and there and some tweaking of the documents based on discussions and review from the town engineer's office and the peer review consultant. Electronic copies were sent down to the town planner's office last week on Friday. Paper copies were partially delivered today to the town planner's office with the balance tomorrow. A complete set has also been sent to the town engineer's office as well, summarizing all the revisions or all the changes as one final package in position. I can offer a minute if the architect or the engineer would like to make any further comments to my summary. Bill, please feel free to jump in.
No, Pete, I, I think that about covers it. The, the packages that we, we put together for DPW and for the town planner, they represent all the changes requested by the DPW, by the independent peer review. They represent the elements that we've heard at various planning board meetings. All, the idea here is this is one complete package that captures all those comments.
So what we were thinking, Mr. Chairman and board members, from our perspective, with the information now compiled and consolidated and as we work towards closing the hearing, we would like to maybe have a discussion this evening to clarify if there are any special conditions that we would, we would need to clarify or have a discussion about.
All right, so let's stick it around the room. Let's see if anybody has it. Actually, you know what? Before I pull it up for the members, Anna, is there anything in particular that you feel like we need to highlight here that isn't already been discussed?
I'm a document of potential conditions. So I would be going off of that. So if he wants to present it, he can. If not, I can share my screen. But I don't have anything in particular on my end.
Okay. So basically, whatever's already in that draft, unless, unless the petitioner has an issue with it, that's, that's already things we've discussed. But there's nothing you know of outstanding that's come up that needs to have a condition added since then.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. All right, then we'll start with, start with Mr. Ryder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've reviewed these plans, I don't know, a long time now. I think we've discussed every point. I think both the design team, the architects, landscape architects, the OPM did a great job in meeting all of our concerns. And I'm looking forward to this project getting started. And I believe next week we'll have that full list of all those items that have been brought up all along the way. And I think we'll be ready to move forward. I appreciate all the hard work on, on behalf of everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryder. Mr. Fataia?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I echo Eric's concerns and the comments. Very happy with how it's progressed and how it's, how it's going. I'd like to see that thing get resolved ASAP and then get moved forward to start getting a shovel on the ground. So I think we did a pretty good job to get, to get to this point. So it's probably the fourth quarter and ready to go. So I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fataia. Mr. Fowler? There you go.
All set?
Yep.
I, listen, Mr. Collins, I'm not concerned at all about giving a yay vote today, but I would rather wait till next Monday. Fortunately, we have all these meetings in a row and we can then see everything in black and white that we don't have today and make a qualified decision. I for one, as I said, would vote aye today based on what Mr. Collins said. And, but I, I think some members would rather see it in front of them. So I'm all set.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Mr. Delaney? Mr. Delaney.
I, I also kind of agree. The only thing is, if we, if we could come to a decision, I was hoping to be able to come to a decision tonight because if we make a decision next week, then it's another week that they, another meeting that they have to come back or are we going to waive that? In other words, we're talking if we don't approve, I was hoping to be able to approve this thing tonight. Okay, now from there, if we, if we approve it next week, now we're, we're a month away from the actual approval. The actual approval date. If it's a way that we can move this thing tonight, I would like to do that if possible. But I guess we're missing a few things in the, in the paperwork. But we could probably, you know, that's just the way I feel. I think if it's a week, it's another week, it's another week. Unless we're going to waive that thing and just approve everything next week and that'll, that'll do it. But if not, then they're going to have to wait another two weeks before they can do any, before they have to come back to us again. So other than that, I'm all set with whatever the board decides.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney. To your, to your point that you just made, just is informational. And I think you brought up in the last one, but maybe not. The, because of the state of emergency and the laws that the state has passed, the tolling period, I'm sorry, the appeal period is tailed right now until the state of emergency is lifted, which means all of our decisions, whether we made them this week, two weeks ago, next week, the 30-day appeal period isn't running. So I just assumed I would want to wait till next week only because then we'll have the draft decision in hand. We'll have had those plans that came in, in hand and checked out. And we're not really harming the petitioner in this case because one week, it's not an extra week because the state of emergency still has everything frozen. So that, that's, that's just my, again, I'll go with whatever everybody wants to do. But I think for, for being as clean as possible on such a big project, I'd just as soon like to see all the Ts crossed and the Is dotted. And since we're not harming them in terms of as far as the appeal period time, I just think that that would be better. Otherwise, I have no, I have no outstanding issues on the project. I think we've gotten to a good place and we should be ready to go next week when we have the draft decision in hand with the conditions. So other than that, I'm all set. So with that, I will open it up to the audience. Anyone in the audience who wishes to call in or watching at home? Reminder again, that number's 978-771-0819. We do have a little bit of a delay, so we'll stall a little bit of time to give people a chance to call in if they need to or want to. Do we have anybody on the line at this time?
No calls, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so while we give folks a couple of minutes or a couple of seconds just to catch up, I'll just run, I'll run through the Board members. Are the Board members all right with waiting till next week or do they have preference not to do that?
Mr. Chairman. Eric here. You know, either way, I agree with the tolling date, but I'm satisfied that we've gone over everything. It, it's just a matter of all being put in black and white and I'll do either, whatever the board is willing to do this evening.
Okay, all right. Well, I think we've given folks at, at home enough time, so.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Anna, yes.
Um, I would just like to have the next couple of days to finalize the conditions because I just got the draft from the applicant today.
Okay.
So in terms of administrative side, I think it just would be, but that's just, you know, a opinion, so.
All right, so I think with the administrative standpoint, unless there's really strong feelings on the board's side, I'd just as soon finalize this at our next meeting and that way we have all the conditions in hand and both sides, our side and their side, have had a chance to be sure everybody's on the same page. Unless, unless we have a strong objection to that, I'd just as soon do this at our next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, Vinnie Fataia here. I'd like to make a motion to continue this to next week myself. Get the paperwork in hand, give Anna a time, some time to get the, all her paperwork together. Like you said, cross the Ts, dot the Is. One week's time is not going to make or break the project. I think we've done a good job getting to where we are now and any problems for the most, most part, I think one more week and it's probably the best thing to do in terms of doing it correctly. So my opinion, so.
All right, so we have a, so we have a motion to continue this to 7:25 on May 11. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, so a motion made in second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, so we, we should expect to finish this up next week. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item F, 495 Woven Street. Site plan special permit, special permit, use special permit, Stein special permit, continue from our 427 meeting. Do we have anyone here from 495 Woven Street?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Robert Buckley, Raymond Bronstein. I have on, they should be online, Representatives of VHB and MDM Transportation Consultants to answer any questions. Since the last meeting, we have provided staff and I assumed the board with responses to the engineering memorandum dated April 29th, 2020. We feel comfortable that all the conditions set forth there, therein are agreeable and the plans will be revised to reflect any minor modifications, but any of the other conditions are satisfactory to the applicant. We have, we have also provided a response to the traffic consultants' peer review that was prepared by our traffic consultant, MDM, and that was also delivered. And finally, we have provided draft conditions that we feel are appropriate to ensure compliance with the concerns and issues raised by the traffic consultants, your peer review consultants, to ensure that the project will proceed as, hopefully ultimately approved by the board. But before I ask the board if they have any questions, I know there were two issues that we were specifically asked to look at last time by the board. One was to provide a rendering of what the building would look like and to discuss landscaping. And I will now turn it over to Connor Nagel from VHB and Jeff Black to have a brief discussion of those two issues to respond to the inquiry that was made.
Good evening, Connor Nagel here at VHB. Can you all see the, the screen, the proposed conditions site plan?
Yes.
So that's the site plan that you've seen before. Just to explain what you will see here from this angle, we have a landscape plan rendered low off of the entrance here that was requested at the last hearing. We have some, we have an architectural rendering, rendering of the front of the building here. And then we have taken perspective views from out on Woven Street here and from Discovery Way as you cross the bridge here, what the site is like coming into it. So if I move on through those, this, there we go, sorry. This is the, the arc, what the architectural, the building would look like from within the auto parking adjacent to the building. It's a gray and white building. So there is perspectives of the long and short elevation on the north and the east, the east being the auto parking end away from the river. The landscape focused up around the front here, providing islands with shade trees for the, for breaking up the parking lot, trying to address heat island effects and, and to get as close as we can to the zoning requirement of 5% interior landscape. As you'll recall, we have requested a waiver on that. Overall, we have more landscape than is required, more open space than is required. But because of the long slender layout of the parking lot, we can't get to quite the 5% on this end of it. But there is a lot of landscape focused around this area to break up the, the view of the building. A couple of aerial shots here taken from Google Earth to show the buffer along the railroad line here. And this one shows it even a little better. There's quite an effective screen. This here is the old, right, the onsite, the project site. And you can see how much screen there is along the railway line. Both sides of this are within the right of way, so all of that screening will remain, which quite effectively will block out almost any view. In this perspective, we have, the existing conditions are sort of flat under here. So we have just sort of popped up a model of the 515 building out in front and then a model of the proposed building back in here with the landscaping shown. This is the existing view taken from Google Street View out on Woven Street, looking through the parking lot of 515, just adjacent to the site driveway. As you can see here, coming in from the right and across the bridge. This is the, this screen here is the existing screen that I mentioned that is within the railroad right of way and will stay there. Again, this is the shot right into the, to Discovery Way across the bridge, taken from Google Earth. So this then is a proposed view from Woven Street, from that street across the way. You can see the bridge just here. The existing conditions get flattened, as I mentioned. So what we have done is put in some trees there of the same height. We have not fully put in the density of the existing screen. So you can just about see the building. We wanted to give you a sense of where the building was, so you don't think we're just hiding it. But it's about the height of the existing screen. So effectively, it will not be seen from Woven Street. This here is a rendering from Discovery Way on the inside of the site. This would be the auto parking at the east end of the building, just to give you a sense of scale of the building versus trucks and whatnot in the site. So that, that's what we have for renderings. I'd be happy to answer any questions or address any concerns with those or any other issue.
All right, so why don't we take it through once on this end and then we'll go back when we get to the traffic, just to see if there's anything that we gotta go move. We'll start with Mr. Fowler. You're all set.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I appreciate this very attractive renderings, very professional, very easy to understand. The good thing about it is that realize that the railroad track is, excuse me. I had, I had the TV on, I apologize. The railroad tracks that elevate, with the elevation there at the railroad track easement, it will block, not only with the elevation of the grade, but the trees on it will block off a lot of sound left and right, going out to Woven Street or Woven Street in. So it's going to be a really self-contained piece of property. The facade, the rendering that you showed, shows a very attractive building and I don't think we're going to expect much more for, from that site. With the amount of trees that you have in the green area, it's going to be very nice. So I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fowler. Mr. Fataia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I as well, I appreciate the renderings. One of the renderings you showed, the roof area. And that roof building would be ideal for solar. So I think we'd like to let you guys look into the possibility of maybe promoting the solar aspect of that thing. That is a huge roof. I know it's down on Wamisett Lanes, which is not a big structure in town, but I mean, that would generate a lot of solar power for your facility or whatever. But you know, it's just a shame that you wouldn't be incorporating that into the plan. So maybe if you could look at that, you know, going forward, I think that would be a nice addition to the building because no one's going to see it anyway, except Google Earth. So with that, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right, Mr. Delaney.
I think we got it straightened out last week, but the hours of operation for the building, do we have how many hours a day this building is going to be operating? Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can. They'll, they'll, it'll be, the operation will be three shifts or perhaps four shifts, but they're staggered shifts. There'll be someone at the site 24/7. The, the bulk of the people that come in, the largest shift are the morning shifts, where they come in early and they leave. But there will be operations going on in, on that site 24/7. Staff overnight is very, very, very normal.
Okay, another question because I kind of got hit with this from a couple of the residents. The trucks are going to come in from 495 Woven Street and go back out Woven Street to 495? In other words, the trucks riding through the neighborhoods.
We actually have provided in the material submitted, a draft condition that there'll be, the neighborhood will be protected from the truck traffic.
Okay. Other than that, the renderings, everything is beautiful in this building. It's going to be a pleasure to see something like this in Tuxbury. So I'm all set, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney. Mr. Ryder.
Thank you, Mr. Buckley. Great job, renderings are terrific. I think it will be a nice addition to that area. The green space and the trees once all in there, as Mr. Fowler stated, that's going to give it some, some noise protection. But I think it's a great layout and a nice job all around. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment?
You may.
Just for the record, Mr. Ryder, I wanted to be clear that I can't draw a straight line, so the credit should go to Mr. Delaney.
Connor, great job, thank you very much, both of you, to all your staff. That was a well thought out and well designed, thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Black at VHB, who's on the call.
All right, so for me, I can't really say any more than the other members have in terms of, you know, what we presented to us. You know, we get a lot of folks who, you know, sometimes eventually they get us what we want. You guys have been ahead of the game and got us everything. If we didn't get it before we even asked, you guys have provided it once we did. I'll agree with all the other, the other folks except I'll say that it's going to be a pleasure to have the business in town, but not see it because for where this is going to be and the shielding that's there, I think this is what we wish we could get for a lot of the buildings when they're in front of us, where no one should see this, they're not going to hear it, it's pretty much a hall. And if we get the traffic issues squared away, I don't think there could be a better project for what this will provide and not have a lot of side effects. So I, I don't think I could be much happier from that standpoint. So with that, let's move on to the traffic.
Uh we provided the responses, uh Mr. Chairman, to the traffic consultant. Uh but we went uh further than that and we took the draft responses and comments that your consultant raised and we've turned them into affirmative conditions that I forget the total number, but I think there are about twenty-five of them or twenty of them, that we would be inclined uh at the board's discretion to have them as special conditions in the permit uh so that you, as the board and the town, uh feel that what we've said during the hearing process is reflected in the decision and you have the protection. So um I think that all the conditions reflected the issues raised. Um certainly over the next week or so, uh with any uh any comments from your professional staff or your consultant would be uh would be welcome, but uh we intend to reflect in the permit what we've committed to in the process. And to that end, if it's uh agreeable to the chair and the board, over the next couple of days, uh we would like to deliver to the uh staff and to the board a draft uh uh permit reflecting all of the conditions that have been raised through the process, the engineer, fire, et cetera, so that you'll have a uh complete list of uh of uh things to consider.
All right, well, I would say oh that that would be that would certainly be welcome. The sooner the better when you have it, just that gives um the staff a chance to look it over.
Absolutely.
And make sure everything's squared away in the hopes that, um as I suspect, that we might be in a position to uh finalize this as well at our next meeting, uh but only if we get everything squared away. So the sooner the better on all these things, I think.
Yeah, I I that's our object objective also, because we'd like to move forward, given the significant tax revenue that this will be generating for the town and rather unfortunate conditions that we're all living through right now. But um you know, we'll have our commitment, you have my commitment and I know the team's commitment to get those to you as soon as possible.
All right, so before I open it up to the board members on any traffic comment, I'd like to ask, I believe we have our consultants on the call this evening, is that correct?
That is correct. You have Jeffrey Dirk with the National Associates, the Town's Traffic Consultants on the.
All right, so why don't we start with you then, Jeff? And you uh you've received the comments back, is that correct?
I did, I received the response letter on Friday. I did have a chance to go through those, the responses before tonight's meeting. So um it based on my view of those responses, the applicant has been um they did respond to each and every one of the items we have listed. Um and I think as the attorney had mentioned, uh kind of the genesis of it or the outcome of that, really there's some minor technical issues relative to the traffic analysis, all of which have been revised or resolved based on the applicant's submission. Um so what we're really talking about from the standpoint of um kind of my review is to focus on the um the mitigation measures or the commitments to mitigation uh that the attorney had mentioned. Um I did have a chance to go through those. I believe that the commitments to mitigation have incorporated um my suggestions. Um the only outstanding area that we had mentioned really deals with the Woburn Street corridor. And specifically, as you're probably aware, the um corridor study that was done by the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments had recommended some specific improvements. Um basically starting with the access into this party and then extending northerly towards the uh I four ninety-five interchange area. Uh the applicant is committed to implementing those improvements at the access into the property site. Um so what what is lacking in terms of commitments to mitigation is how do we address the improvements up at the interchange area? And we understand that the four ninety-five interchange with Woburn Street today is poor operating conditions. One of the intersections, in fact, is a is a crash rate that exceeds the state average. Uh we were suggesting in our comments uh that the applicant assist the town, at least with developing potentially some plans so that the town could seek funding for future improvements at the interchange. Again, the project doesn't result in any significant impacts over what's happening out there today. But of course, this try this project being very truck centric, um if you think about the queuing that happens on those ramps today, because there are not signals at the ramps, adding additional truck traffic to those ramps, of course exacerbates the queuing that might happen and potentially extending back to four ninety-five. So while not asking the applicant to implement the improvements that were suggested in the corridor study, we were suggesting that the applicant could work with the town to at least develop plans of a sufficient level to allow for the town to apply for grant monies to implement the improvements that were suggested in the corridor study. So I think that's the only outstanding item relative to commitments to mitigation. We had suggested that the applicant uh look at doing um that uh remains outstanding and certainly in a subject for both the applicant and the board to have further discussions about.
Um Mr. Chairman, may I may I respond to that?
You may.
Um I think it would be worthwhile for Jeff and uh Bob to show our traffic consultant to talk offline along those lines and report back to the board with something either in a condition. Um and I don't know, I'm on the board of Middlesex Three, which is a regional coalition. Um and I'm sure that we could we could provide the you know, the town with some comfort that uh we will be active but active participants in trying to uh address those issues.
All right, so I think if we, yeah, I think if you guys can speak offline and get that to a point where it's we squared away, same thing, I think that'll we just fold it into um into the final condition. That's that's amenable to everyone.
Thank you.
All right, so with that, I will bring it to the board for any of the comments they have on traffic. Uh Mr. Ryder.
Uh thank you. Um after reading uh both um the the study and the mitigation uh conditions, um uh Mr. Dirk just stated, um I think the biggest concern that I had was the off-ramp um uh four ninety-five at Woburn Street. Uh um I know that area very well and that has always been an interesting uh intersection coming off, crossing over that. And I think with the added um truck traffic as well as uh uh automobiles with workers and such, um I think um uh it's a good idea that they um work together to potentially come up with a design that the town could eventually uh get in uh some funding for. But I think um, you know, all the mitigation conti uh conditions are uh excellent. I appreciate that. Um and I think uh with all these um conditions, uh it will help uh the neighborhood and move that traffic um smoothly in and out of that property. Thank you and uh good work both uh by the applicant as well as our um our consultant. Thank you.
Ryder, Mr. Delaney.
Uh yeah, I I'm kind of going along with our our consultant. Um and I kind of uh echo the same words as uh Mr. Ryder. Uh obviously, when they say uh two hundred and thirty-two trips entering and fifty-four exiting, that must mean the length of time it takes to load the trucks that are in the yard before they leave.
Right, essentially, yes.
Is that basically?
Yep.
Okay. All right, I I think I understand it completely. Just if if we can find a way to move the traffic a little bit, a little bit better than what's there right now, I'm all for it. And I I thank you all again, our consultant and Mr. Buckley. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney. Mr. Vatalia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um great to see Mr. Dirk again. We've seen you at one of our town meetings prior, I mean, uh planning meetings before. I think you addressed some issues on the uh Pleasant Street School Project, correct?
I did, yes, thank you.
It was very, very helpful then and um I do have to uh commend you on this profession you're in because um I did review the twenty-six pages that we have here. And I gotta I gotta tell you, I started with a good intention, uh but looking at it, it went from optimistic to craziness, so I want to lighten it up a little bit here. So so I started with the T I A S and I found a discrepancy that went from five hundred and ninety-one thousand to seven hundred and fifteen thousand. Then I reviewed the I T E rates and mythology, and that just kind of threw me for a loop. Then I went to the M E P A and the threshold situation. Then I went to the I A T, only to find that the review uh made the E N F not required. But then I went to the T D M and it needed to be funded by the R S A. And pending that, need to apply for the tip list in order to find out that mass C O T that is not the H H H T C, so we're not eligible for that H I S P funding. Then you discussed the L R T A situation, where I took the bus and I and I read the muted manual, M U T E D, for a little while. And then we proceeded to the I T E tenth edition. Then I ended up going to A A. Then I read the tra- traffic mitigations and that just blew me over the top. So uh so with that, I sure hope you can help us out as a town and work out with the uh Mr. Mishad and Mr. Dumez uh company and get us uh situated in this program because uh that stuff just was mind-boggling, I and I had to say that. So uh again, thank you for all you do for the town and uh hopefully uh I'm all for this pro- project. I think it'll be a great addition to town and uh I just think um uh in the end, uh we'll all be better off for this uh tax-wise and job-wise and everything else. So with that, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
I'd like to thank Mr. Vatalia for the T L C that he showed in doing this. And we'll now move on to Mr. Fowler.
You put him to sleep.
He's trying to figure out which letter in the alphabet you missed.
Yeah.
You hear me?
Yes.
Uh Mr. Vatalia, with all your studying this weekend, you're brought to you're up to an associate's degree in uh uh traffic engineering.
Oh my God, yeah.
Okay. Uh likewise, fine job. I'm very pleased with the uh final outcome of this. I can't see anything more being done. Um I just uh it's funny, Vinnie, you put a funeral in the day. Good job. No, Mr. Chairman, I'm uh all set with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. I'll agree with the other members. I think, you know, we don't, I think it goes to what I said before, which is we don't have a lot of applicants who who sort of do this much before we ask them to. Um I think that was was about twenty-five conditions, if I I understood correctly. Um that is that is not the norm unless, you know, we're doing some kind of teeth pulling to get that that kind of detail to make sure that these things are taken care of. Um on the one issue that was outstanding, I'll agree, it would be good to see some sort of agreement come into place. But as much for us as for the applicant as well, because I think um as I think Mr. Ryder pointed out, the the potential queuing up of of the, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, our consultant got that, I'm sorry. Um the queuing up that could happen, it's it's not helpful to the business anymore than it is to the town if you can't get your trucks in and out in a timely manner because they're having trouble with that intersection either. So I think, you know, uh whatever kind of partnership there can be, I think it benefits all involved in that area to work as smoothly as possible. So uh hopefully I'll be able to get squared away.
And Mr. Chairman, we'll we'll initiate contact tomorrow and and have those discussions. And as I indicated, we will get draft conditions to you or permit conditions for the overall permit probably by uh let's say Monday, it's all blended together by Wednesday, um is our goal. And I do, I I would ask the chair's permission, if I could, this is being recorded, is it not?
Correct.
I'd like to send that to Saturday Night Live, there's got to be a skit somewhere.
Well, I know, they're looking for material, they're doing all this stuff from home too.
That was that was well done, so thank you.
So Buckley, I want some money back on that, okay?
We'll give we'll we'll give you a producer's credit.
There you go. I may need it.
All right, so um we'll open it up to the audience again. Anyone at home who wants to call in on this, nine seven eight seven seven one zero eight one nine. As we discussed before, we do have a slight delay, so we'll give people a a few seconds opportunity to get on the line if they need to. Uh do we have anyone on the line for this matter at this time?
No callers, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so while we give a few seconds to see if anybody wants to call in, um just for a checklist here, you folks will uh will get in your draft conditions and your draft permit as soon as you can, uh hopefully at least by Wednesday. And then we'll have our end have a chance to take a look at it. You know, any any conversations, Anna, that you feel like you need to have with petitioner um before they submit their their draft, uh please, please let them know. And we can hopefully settle this up on Monday. Think I've stretched long enough to see if anybody else wanted, anybody wanted to call in. I presume we do not have anyone.
Mr. Chairman.
I that's correct, yeah.
Go ahead, Anna.
So they obviously in their um memos that were submitted stated that they would be sending uh sending revised plans to address certain items. Um those will need to be submitted to our community development department as soon as possible so that we can forward that to the town departments for their final reviews. Um and we do need hard copies, electronic copies will not so suffice. So we are still have the requirements of hard copies.
Okay, Mr. Buckley, you have that?
Yeah, so Connor will chat in the morning.
Yes, that's fine, we can provide hard copies of the updated ones.
All right, very good. All right, so we had no one on the line, so we'll bring it back to the board. Um so my expectation is we will continue this to our next meeting and that would be at seven thirty on May eleventh. So I have a motion to continue this to seven thirty on the eleven.
So moved.
All right, I have a motion and I'll take the other as the second. The motion made in second, all the favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All all those opposed, hearing none, motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you, gentlemen. We look forward to talking to you next week and hopefully settling this up.
Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Chairman.
All right, so moving on to all business. Do we have any old business anyone wishes to discuss?
None at the time.
Hearing none? Any new business anyone wishes to discuss?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I know um you were, I believe you're going to make a comment on that.
Yeah, I was going to do it the next one in correspondence.
Okay, all right, I'll I'll hold off until then. Thank you.
All right. So with no new business, we'll go to correspondence. So all the members received a copy of a uh anonymous letter that was submitted to me. Uh but by reading through it, I could tell that the intent was to uh address the board. So I made sure I had everybody get a copy of that. Um and I I think everyone's had a chance to take a look. Uh I I'll I'll say this, you know, we've had similar comments made both at our public meetings in various kinds of, you know, online comments or or whatever. Um the gist being um feeling of whether it's the overdevelopment in the town, um whether the board, you know, just gives whoever comes in whatever they want and, you know, things along those lines. And, you know, saying also along the lines of, you know, that's why, you know, no one comes to the meeting, no one participates, you're not going to listen anyways. So I'll say this, I take issue with the we will not listen. Okay, now, people can disagree or agree on our what decisions we make and how they feel about them. Everybody's entitled to their opinion. Um people, I don't expect everyone to agree with every decision we make. Um and we're obviously going to make some people unhappy while we make other people happy. That's fine, that's just the nature of what we're doing. But to say that we don't listen, I think is unfair uh characterization of what the board does. Um I don't believe anyone on the board has ever failed to listen to anyone who's taken the time to come in. Uh while we will try to tell people that they can't discuss certain matters if they aren't in the realm of what the planning board does or if it becomes, you know, uh sort of an out-of-hand presentation, we will make efforts to reel those folks in, to keep them on topic and um acting in a you know, a a reasonable manner. But we've never not listened to anyone and I think any claims to the contrary are inaccurate and unfair to the board members who put the time in. And I would challenge anyone to come to our meetings or in this case, you know, get online and participate in the meetings uh and see if they still make the same comment at the end of the day. Um, you know. at the end of the day. Um, you know. Basically, you know, if, if you don't participate, then, you know, you're not gonna be part of the decision-making or the solutions or the direction. So I would recommend to anyone that they make sure that they do try to participate, because if you don't, you know, it's really hard to complain when you haven't been part of the process. Our meetings are always, uh, publicized, you know, where they're held. When we were in the town hall and, and present with everyone, um, the same pretty much across the board. It's usually every other Monday. In this case, we're doing it online, and we're doing our very best to make sure we give everybody an opportunity to participate, to call in if they want to, to hear our deliberations, our discussions on all these matters that come before us. But I think just sitting at home and not participating and then complaining about the way we do what we do, um, on behalf of the town and on behalf of the residents, um, is unfair. So I would ask that whoever did write the letter, you're, you're more than welcome, and obviously we certainly have a complete right to be part of our meeting, and I, I encourage you to do so and voice your thoughts. We will listen to them. We may or may not agree with them. Um, at the end of the day, that's, that's the job we've been asked to do. Uh, it's a job we've been elected to do. As a reminder, you know, we're an elected board. There's only a couple of them in town. So the citizens have asked us to do the job we're doing. So I, I would ask that, you know, you, you participate and, you know, tell us what you think. We'll certainly listen. We've never not listened. We've never told anyone that we're not interested in their opinion. Uh, we may or may not agree with it. Simple as that at the end of the day. We try to make the best decision, I think. I think in this case, I will speak for the whole board and say that I think every decision we make has been done by the members of the board, past and present, at least that I've been part of, uh, in what they thought was the best interest of the town. And I hope that that's what we continue to do. It's what I think we will do. So those are my thoughts on that. Um, if any of the other members have any comments, feel free. Um, Mr. Ryder, I think you wanted to comment on it, so I'll start with you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, and well said. Um, you know, I, I read the letter as well, and, you know, as you stated, I think, um, I, I, I'd like to see more people at our meetings. Um, I, I think, um, it's something that it's, uh, not attended enough. I think people need to be informed, and, um, you know, since me sitting on this board, I think, you know, we've, uh, we've gone through developments with fine-toothed comb. Uh, this individual mentions the, uh, North Street at Andover Street, um, development. Um, and I hate to say we put somebody through the wringer, but we went through that development, and, um, I think at the end of the day, that is going to be a nice addition to that neighborhood. Um, and one thing to point out is that, as you stated, not everyone's going to agree with everything we do, but they have to look at the bigger picture, that some of these parcels can become something that nobody wants. So, and I think the board looks at that and takes that into serious consideration. Um, you know, we are all residents of this town, and, um, every decision that we make is impacting not only us, our families. Um, so I do take exception to the comments that are made, and, uh, I, I welcome, as you do, more people to get involved. Um, come to the meetings, ask questions. Every one of us, um, people contact us. I, I'm open to, um, more individuals reaching out to me if they don't feel comfortable going to the meetings. But I think it's something that, um, they can't say that's not well advertised. Uh, uh, get involved, look at the message boards, go online, and see what's happening in town, and you'll understand what this board's doing. And I think, um, we're all doing a great job, and, um, the recent projects have really shown that. Thank you.
Mr. Ryder, any of the other members with any thoughts on this?
I have just one comment, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vatalia?
Is, um, I think we, I think, I seen the letter. I think the, uh, whoever wrote it should have signed it. I think we're giving him more time than he deserves, because if he commented on this, he should have signed it. We would have had an idea who it came from. So I won't give it any more time than, than what we spent on it already. So I'm all set. Thank you.
All right. Uh, Mr. Fowler, do you have anything on this?
He's not here, Mr. Chairman.
I think he's just on mute.
No, he's at his desk either.
Oh, okay. All right. Um, Mr. Delaney, do you have anything you wanna add?
Uh, if I had anything to add, I'd be echoing the same thing that the board, the chairman and Mr. Ryder and Vinnie has already stated. Now, if you don't like what we're doing, you have a perfect avenue to say what you wanna say. You can come to the meeting, put your name on it, and I don't think there's a person that's come in that we haven't listened to. So I will go from there. I, I echo the words of my, my board members.
All right. Well, thank you. I, I think, Mr. Mr. Vatalia, you know, I understand, I, I don't like to rise, raise up those who don't wanna say in their work either, but it was only because those comments echo comments that I think we've heard before. So I just thought I'd use it as an opportunity.
I agree.
To speak on those. You know, I'll remind everyone again, decisions are made by those who show up. You know, we're all here every, every other Monday, pretty much, and, you know, we encourage those who wanna also be part of the decision-making to also show up. All right. So with that, um, we'll move on to, anything on the town planners' report?
Nope, I didn't have one this week.
All right. So with that, I will, uh, take a motion for adjournment.
I have, Mr. Chairman, I have one comment I wanted to, wanna say tonight, if I wanted to thank Anna for her, uh, timely response. I had sent a, uh, request for some information, and she was right on it the next day. So Anna, thank you for that. I appreciate it. So, uh, and that's it. So.
All right. So, uh, we'll take, uh, well, first I'll echo Mr. Vatalia's comments, but I will also take a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Good evening.
Good seeing you.
We'll see you next Monday.